Shocking.
Totally shocking. Good evening. Thank you for joining us for the Monday, September 18, 2023 regular board meeting. Mr. Zink, please call the roll.
Mr. De.
Yeah.
Ms. Bodie.
President.
Ms. Casper.
Here.
Ms. Schaefer.
Here.
Ms. O'Connor.
Here. Boarder move to number two approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. De. Discussion?
Yes.
Hearing none. Mrs. Bodie?
So, number six, treasurer's recommendations. If we could separate letter B and C, but letter B, I actually would like to separate it furthermore with finance, monthly finance separated from cash summary.
So, we don't approve that separately? That is part of the monthly financial reports?
Okay.
So, if you would like, we will take each one of those separately instead of as a consent agenda.
Yes, please.
All right. Anything further?
Yes. Number seven, under approval of personnel items, I would like to separate the contract versus from the final.
Again, we accept all personnel items as one motion unless-
I make a motion to separate Vogelmann from the approval personnel items and list that separately.
We can't do that. That comes from-
Is there a second to that motion?
Okay, and I also motion to-
One moment, please. We're taking a vote on this motion first.
Sorry.
Is there a second to the motion to separate Mr. Vogelmann's contract? Hearing none, the motion fails.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to separate approval of monthly financial reports and separate monthly finance from cash summary.
Is there a second to the motion?
You're not even going to second my motion so I can split it up?
You can't do it. We have to-
Yes, you can. We're the board. We can make our own motion and approve it.
We're either going to do a second, and if we second, we can discuss. If we don't second, we won't discuss. Is there a second?
Come on, you're not even going to second my motion.
Hearing none, the motion dies. Is there anything further? Hearing none. Mr. Zink, could you please call the roll for approval of the agenda?
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. De.
Yes.
Ms. Bodie.
No.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes. Boarder move to opening items. Mrs. Bodie, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
President Lynda, you can go ahead.
She said no. She said no, she wouldn't.
Go ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would hope that we could all be united behind that. We'll move on to B, board president comments. I'll reserve those for now. Superintendent comments? Dr. Lully.
Yes, the only comment that I have at this point in time is to thank the Board of Education at the request of the board. The IT department purchased a microphone and speaker system for our hearing of the public opportunities to be enhanced. So, just wanted to announce that and let the board know that we listened and heard and did it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lully. Treasurers comments. Mr. Zink.
Yeah, we have appropriation presentation later in the evening, and so I'll have some stuff there. And a shout out to all of the staff at Lakota that pulled off the transitional space for our junior high amongst the building being shut down. There was a lot of work went into that, and that took everyone from teachers to custodians to SROs and everyone. So, technology department, everybody. So, huge shout out for that. Good work.
Agree completely, Mr. Zink. All right, we move to board reports under four. Board Policy Committee. Dr. Lully, do we have anything tonight?
Nothing new for the Policy Committee.
Thank you. Business Advisory Council, Dr. Lully.
Nothing new for the Business Advisory Committee, except that the survey is out, and we are receiving results from that survey at this point in time. So, at the next meeting that we have, we'll review those results.
And for clarity's sake, that's terrific. We're doing that through the chamber?
The chamber sent it out. They helped us construct some questions along with the board members on the committee and other administrators on the committee, and then we sent it out through them. So, a wide expanse of people were given that chamber, through the chamber, excuse me.
All right. We'll look forward to hearing back from our business community. That'll be an interesting, interesting result. C, Mrs. Schaefer, Butler Technology and Career Development Schools?
Again, we still have not had a meeting since our last board meeting here. Our meeting is tomorrow. But just a reminder, I shared before about the Sergeant Brian Julie 5K that is September 24th, if anyone would like to participate in that. He was the officer who was killed in 2011 deploying the stop sticks. Our meeting tomorrow will be focused on updates on the strategic plan, and in addition, right now, the staff is working on the architectural plans for the expansion with Ponem Leap as well as the aviation hangar in Middletown. So, that continues to move forward.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Any questions or comments for her? Hearing nothing, we'll move to Community Engagement Committee. Mrs. Casper.
We have not had a meeting. We will have a meeting in November 17, I believe, but I wanted to mention that I think that probably all of you saw it on our Facebook page and our website, that our community conversation facilitator has had to back out of his contract, and so we have had to postpone our gifted and our special ed community conversations. We are looking diligently for a new facilitator. The whole board believes in community conversations and hearing from our community, and we know it's important. So, we are not stopping them. We are just, excuse me, continuing to look for a facilitator. We were hoping when we postponed the gifted one, that he could get back to us and reschedule, but unfortunately, he has some personal and some family matters that he had needed to tend to, so he's not going to be able to fulfill our contract. So, we are looking for one, and that also I'm going to do diversity while I'm here.
Sure. Go ahead.
We'll come back to. And so, that also will affect our Diversity Council meeting for now, until we can find a new facilitator. So, we are on pause, just pause. We are not canceling anything, as we continue to look for someone to do those for us.
Good. So, there'll be more information coming out as soon as we have it. Community Advisory Team, Curriculum Advisory Team, Mr. Zink or Dr. Lully?
The committee met on Monday, September 11, and the agenda included the results of the thought exchange that the group launched in early August. The thought exchange was promoted in the back-to-school communications and was live on the website from August 1 through August 31. It asked stakeholders to respond to the following questions. With regard to Lakota's curriculum, what is working well? What opportunities are there for improvement? And what questions do you have? The exchange resulted in just over 300 comments and over 16,000 ratings. The CCAT team reviewed the top results and identified themes that they would like to discuss further at the next meeting. And the themes that the team will look into deeper at the next meeting are consistency in math, science of reading, social emotional learning, more opportunities for specials, music art, physical education at the elementary, and electives at the junior high and high school, the amount of testing, more support for teachers, AP and CCP classes in preparation for the college career workforce military thing, the score that will come up on the report card next year, how we teach history, curriculum focus for the school year '24, including the program of study work that's currently taking place, and the parent use of online platforms like Home Access Center and Canvas. The team will meet again on Thursday, November 16 at 6:00 p.m. The curriculum team will bring further information on all of the topics listed so that the CCAT can determine next steps for the team. And that concludes the report from that committee.
Thank you. Any questions on that?
Yes.
Mrs. Bodie?
You said 300. What was the 300 number? I'm sorry.
300 comments and over 16,000 ratings-
Okay.
-on the thought exchange.
So, I mean, that's around, not quite 50%, so I was just speaking with a gentleman earlier. We have about 17,000 students. Each student has approximately give or take two parents that made them. So, that would be 34,000 approximately, but even if it's like a grandparent or-
Audience, please.
Even if it's like just an adult or someone that is responsible for them, I would think that that 16,000 at least votes, is that from each individual person, or can one person come back and vote multiple times?
On the, Lori Brown, could you come forward and further explain that to the board so that you have a clear understanding of how that worked? And the comments actually are typed in comments from people, so those are, some people may have written in more than one comment related to the questions that are there. But Mrs. Brown will explain the ratings so that we have a clear understanding of that.
Because my question is, if we have 300 comments, and I don't, I'm not quite sure if the reach is adequate enough to represent the whole community. And so, I question, and I saw that some of the results of that, and I know that a majority of the community actually do not support some of the things that were rated higher, and unfortunately, their voice isn't represented in these.
The CCAT team is a team that's exploring things. They're not a decision-making body, but they are a team that's looking at things to make sure that they have an understanding of what's out there. So, without having that decision-making power, if you will, the number of results that they're looking at don't affect anything other than their understanding of, okay, there are 300 comments, there are 16,000 ratings. So, they're just getting an understanding from those things that are available to them, so that they know a little bit more than what they did before they joined the committee. So, I understand what you're saying about it. You believe that it's not representative of the community, but I don't know that that was the intent. I think the intent was to just gather information and an understanding of what people have questions about or what people are thinking about some of those things, just to give them some input.
I still believe that these surveys are a little biased personally.
Everybody has the-
Mrs. Brown, could you explain the ratings and how we have 16,000, please?
Is it on? Yes, so when you go on to a thought exchange, we gave the question, a broad question that said, you know, what are the things that are working within Lakota's curriculum? What would you like to see improved? What questions do you have? So, anyone could go in and create a comment. So, someone has a choice to either come in and enter a new comment, or just go through the comments that have been put in and rate them. And the system makes sure that not, that all the comments are seen with the same amount of viewership, so every comment gets the same amount of ability to be rated. And it does have some safeguards to prevent someone from going in and saying the same thing over and over. But yes, we are always interested in more input. We provided this website, or the thought exchange on our website, and our back-to-school mailer, put it out several times to try to get as much input as we could. I understand that. Thank you for explaining that. My concern is that the conservative elected, the conservatives got elected, and the votes and the tallies do not add up to the minority voice that is represented as the majority in these questionnaires. So, just the math just doesn't add up. But I know that there's a lot of people who do not have children who actually pay taxes that are concerned about the local schools because they are affected, because our students work in the community. They take care of these people, and so that's just my feedback. And I understand that you're trying your best to get a good voice, to get a good representation, and I appreciate that. I just, however, do not feel that it's adequate, our community is adequately represented. So, thank you.
And we'd be happy to take any feedback that, if there's a better way to get any feedback that you're hearing, we would be happy to do it.
No, I'm the voice of a lot of those people. So, that's really what I can say according to that. Unfortunately, I think I would like more input from, and more involvement, but unfortunately, we don't get that all the time. So, that's just my thought.
So, we'll let other board members weigh in.
Thank you, Mrs. Brown.
I do want to say, as a reminder, though, the curriculum advisory team is made up of community members, and so that is bringing a voice to the table as well. And it's also completely-
I'm the floor.
Mrs. Bodie, you do not have the floor now. Thank you. It's also completely voluntary who chooses to participate in the thought exchange. We can only open up that opportunity, and it was open for an entire month to receive input, which I think is longer than we would normally do. So, I appreciate the fact that you gave that broad window to it. Mrs. Casper.
So, the thought exchange is open to anyone. So, if there are people that want their voices heard, then they should be doing the thought exchange. It's open to anybody in the community. It's not just specific to school people, correct?
Or to one demographic of the community.
Yes, Betsy's giving me the thumbs up. So, if they want their voices heard, then they should be doing the thought exchange, because that's what it's for.
Well, and my question to that-
Mrs. Bodie, wait. We're going to give everybody a chance to speak.
Well, and my question to that would be-
Then we'll come back around to you, please.
Not everyone has access to-
Mrs. Casper, do you have anything further?
To internet.
Do you have anything further?
I don't. I don't think she's getting my point.
Mrs. Schaefer, anything?
Again, anyone can write a comment. I think many people just choose then to go in and rate the comments because they feel that their thought is already captured, and why change three words and have the same sentiment already expressed? So, that's why I'm glad to hear that we had 16,000 people who rated them, which to me gives a much broader representation. You can just go in and see what's there and rate things. And I don't think any of us can say definitively how many people in the community feel one way and/or the other, given that we, none of us interact with every single person in this community. So, I appreciate electronic tools such as this that give everyone an opportunity to be heard equally.
Thank you. Mr. De, anything?
Yeah, the only thing I'll say here is I'm glad that we have participation. To me, 16,000 is a good number. I thought we're not going to have enough people show interest, but 16,000 is a good number. If it continues to grow, that's fine, but I think is a good number.
Very good. Mrs., I'm sorry.
I was just going to, Mrs. Fuller, is that the highest? I know we kept it open for a whole month, so probably, but is that the most ratings we've ever had in a thought exchange? Just curious.
Very well. Thank you, Mrs. Brown. Mrs. Bodie, did you have anything else?
Yes, my concern that I'm also expressing is just the people who do not have internet access, and I would say that that is quite a few in our community. So, I just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
All right. Anything else, Dr. Lully? On the CCAT team?
That's all. That concludes the report for the CCAT team.
All right. Boarder move to G, the Facilities Committee. I have touched base, I think, with everybody on the possibility tentatively scheduling an October 18, 6:00 p.m. facilities meeting. If you could all check your calendars, please, and get back to me by close of business tomorrow, so we can get that on the calendar. I'd appreciate it. We move to Finance Committee. Mr. Zink.
Yeah, we had a Finance Committee meeting on, we had a change of schedule on September 8 for my vacation that I was on last week, thanks to Ms. Bodie and Ms. Schaefer for accommodating that. We had it scheduled for the 13th. We had a guest speaker, Nancy Nix. Our county auditor came in, spoke with the committee, as well as Mike Stein. He is the real estate director, I believe, with the county. I know I'm messing up his title, but she came in and spoke with us about the upcoming changes and about the potential ask for the board to look at reduced millage to help support the community. Anything I can come back into, but you guys would like to kind of add to the speaker?
It felt that you had a lot of questions, or we all actually had several questions that additional information was requested because they weren't able to answer, and it was, to me, sort of an ask without understanding the full ramifications of what that ask could actually mean. We would have, in my opinion, from the conversation, we would have no way of forecasting what we're going to receive and the impact if you take less here, are you also then going to receive less from the state? Because we're being asked to do this where others in the state are not, and then it looks like we are wealthier based on this data, lowering our revenue on this side. So, there were a lot of, I think, unintended consequences that could result from the ask that there weren't answers for, and they applauded Adam particularly for his depth of questioning and research that he had done to better understand the issue going in.
I do not think that this is the best way to approach the situation. You know, so many variables have changed, especially since I was elected and I became on the board. Our percentage from the, the percentage from the income taxes has changed in the past two years. I believe it was like 65% of the taxes, and now it's into the, is it like 59, 61%?
Property taxes. We're around 54% of the total bill.
Yes, yes. So, that's changed dramatically.
We don't have a, let's make clear, we don't have an income tax.
Sorry, yes. Anyway, so I just think that we should address the efficiency of our expenditures going forward and the removal of programs that are not beneficial to our students, and I think this board needs to seriously reevaluate their focus on finance.
And we did, we did ask Ms. Nix a lot of questions. I had sent them an email asking them several different things so that I could better prepare myself to model this for the board, if that's something that you guys would be interested in taking a look at. Until I have the full picture on that, I wouldn't feel appropriate, it's appropriate for me to give information that I can't fairly paint the picture on, so.
I think there's a lot of interest in this, not just from the board, but from our community as well. How quickly do you think you could prepare something on that?
I can prepare something very quickly, but there's a lot of information that I require. It's, the ball's in their court on getting us that information so that we can, you know, kind of paint the picture for the board and see what that looks like.
This is a question I get a lot in the community. What's the impact going to be in Lakota? And you're right, there's not a lot that we can say at this point.
And it was, it was kind of interesting to me that a lot of the talk was in regards to the schools that are on the 20 mil floor, which we are not one of those. House Bill 920 reduces us down. But it's not legal for a school that's on the 20 mil floor to take less than 20 mils per ORC. So, now that makes us, I guess, a target for this type of a plan when we're already seeing the reductions-
Right.
-on House Bill 920 to our effective millage. So, there's a lot of variables at stake here.
A double whammy of sorts.
Yes.
Is there, are there, what other schools in Butler County are not on the 20 mil floor besides?
Us and Fairfield. We're the, we're the two of the 10. And another thing that was brought up at the Finance Committee is there's a lot of interest in House Bill 187, which is looking at a average of the three years, not a weighted average of the three years for an updated reappraisal. They now have Senate Bill, which I was going to talk about at the legislative portion, but we can go ahead and talk now. There's also a Senate Bill 156, I believe it is, that is basically mirroring that. So, there's a lot of interest in that being pushed through this year, and it would go into effect for tax year '23, which is what would be set January 1, which is speculated to take us from that 37, 38 mils for West, sorry, 37, 38% for Westchester and Liberty Township, down to more of a 25%, which would also have a positive impact on the community as a whole for a less change.
So, I think that's an important-
There's a lot of variables.
Yeah, the important point that you made, though, there, or to me, one of them is that the only two schools in the county that are being asked to take less than what would normally be calculated would be Fairfield and Lakota. Everyone else would still see the full impact of the rise in property values, where we already don't get that full rise because of House Bill 920, yet we're the two that are being asked to take even less than that lesser amount.
Yes.
And I think that that's very confusing for people. They think it would be across the board for all districts, where it's not. It's a very small pocket that's being asked to take the bulk of this situation.
Yeah, and I, and I had reached out to Ms. Nix after the, there was an article that went out that said that Lakota's asked portion of this was 10 point some million dollars, which was the biggest in the community. Well, we also have the largest tax base of the ones that they could actually ask. So, you know, there's been a few things going around in the media that I feel like is kind of painting an unfair picture. So, having her come in helped shed a little light on that, and I was glad that she was willing to come in and speak with us. We also, she had a prior engagement for tonight, because one of the things I asked before the meeting ended was if she could come tonight to speak with the whole board, because I knew everybody would like to hear this information. She said she had a prior engagement, so I looked forward to trying to get her to come to one of our meetings before we would be able to really-
That's a good idea.
-take this forward so that everybody has the full picture.
And we were asked, or you specifically asked, or I, somebody specifically asked, what is the direct impact of the valuation change in Lakota? And that was even an answer we could not get at this point in time.
And I also believe that the commissioners were asked to do this, and they declined as well. So, I think that speaks volumes if the commissioners of Butler County declined.
Yeah, that's correct.
Some more to come.
Yeah. It was, it has been a couple eventful Finance Committee meetings for such a boring topic.
We depend on you to keep it interesting, Mr. Zink.
I'm trying.
All right. Anything else on the Finance Committee? And again, when you have that information, I think we would all be very interested in having an update.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah, everybody, we would, we would need a lot of information to be able to bring that decision forward for the board.
So, keep us in the loop, please.
Next, next Finance Committee meeting we have is on October 11 at 3:00, so.
And if you could arrange for Mrs. Nix to attend, that'd be great as well.
Yeah, I plan to have her come. She just had a prior engagement tonight.
Okay.
I think she said Edgewood's board meeting was-
Yeah, she was going to Edgewood's board meeting this evening.
So, maybe we can get her that second meeting in October.
Possibly so. We'll take a look at it. All right, we'll move to Legislative Committee. Mrs. Casper, Dr. Lully, Mr. Zink.
I spoke a little bit about House Bill 187 and the Senate Bill 156, so those are potentially going to have an impact. I did think it was interesting that they, it said that it would sunset after this three-year cycle. So, it wouldn't be a permanent legislation. It would be for this three-year cycle. They would have that in place to do the three-year average, not the weighted. And then it sounded like that would go back to normal. So, I thought that was a little interesting.
And I have nothing to report. Put a Band-Aid on for a bit. Yeah. Anything, Dr. Lully?
Nothing new yet.
No.
Okay.
I have nothing, since they're just now coming back into session. We're back to work.
I have some clarification on legislation.
Go ahead, Mrs. Bodie.
All right. I would like to clarify. Legis HB 123, which was passed in 2021, Liberty, Liberty Junior School put out a letter saying that it is mandatory, according to the Safe Students Act, that students in grades 6 through 12 receive specific instruction on social inclusion, violence prevention, and suicide prevention every year. It also states that they are required to receive one hour of instruction in this area. This is critical race theory, and it is divisive, ugly, and disgusting. I personally believe that it is the parent's responsibility to teach the children how to be kind and promote positive relationships according to their family values. I'd also like to put on record that there is an opt-out availability, and you are not required to participate. You will need to fill out a form stating that you opt out, and I have that form, so you can email me. Also, you are allowed to opt out of the non-emergency evasive physical exam or screening, any surveys given to your student, and other things like political affiliations, sexual behavior, religious practices, and legal recognized relationships under the Protection of Pupils Rights Amendment. So, please contact me through my website at bodipolakota.com if you have any questions regarding this, but you can also opt out of those.
Have you brought that communication to Dr. Lully's attention?
I believe that's on the website.
Yes, it was sent out by, it was sent out by all of our principals. It is required that we provide these opportunities for our students because of the law, and everyone was notified about it. And I believe on each of the letters that, that I'm aware of from each of the buildings, there is, the website address is on there for the opt-out form.
Yeah.
And it's on Lakota Online as well, if I believe. I believe I saw it on Lakota Online also.
Correct.
It is.
Because who would want their child to be kind?
All right. Anything else under Legislative?
Can I say?
Yes.
Yeah, whenever you get maybe the number of people that opt out, it would be good to share with the board, so that we know how many people are opting out.
We will let you know that. Yes, thank you.
And just a reminder to the board, a final note under Legislative, I will be in Washington, DC next week for the Federal Legislative Advocacy Group, which is part of the COSBA, Consortium of State School Board Associations, which was the replacement for NSBA. So, I will be there and speaking with legislators next week, and I'll follow up with a report after that. We'll move to the Safety Committee. Dr. Lully?
Nothing too important until their next meeting in November.
And I'll kind of tie everything together. I look to now with the Community Curriculum Advisory Team- I look to now with the Community Curriculum Advisory Team, the Policy Committee, Safety Committee, and the November seventeenth Facility Committee. I think I got them all. Sending out the update for the Updated Times to group those all together. And we also do have Business Advisory scheduled for November seventeenth at one, which would flow nicely with that.
All right. Anyone have Board Professional Development to report on?
Yes, I do.
Mrs. Bodie?
Tuesday I was on a training, a phone call for the School Board Academy, and we discussed understanding the worldviews. Public servants should have a respect for God, and local government is able to serve the community better because they are more in touch versus, you know, people that work in D.C. The board is to represent the voter and reports to administration, not the other way around. A survey was given to teachers, a majority of the teachers believe that the classroom is not a social experiment and teachers just want to teach. And we discussed exposing the gender lie and that it is an industry, industry, sorry, play to enrich their pockets. We also went over parliamentary procedure and Robert's Rules of Order. A couple of things I would like to point out, each member's opinion weighs the same and the president's does not have any more weight. The board president is not a dictator. And again, it was stated that the president should constantly repeat the motion. And in our case, it has caused confusion and missed votes because the president refuses to follow this policy. I have a basic right as a minority voice to have discussion, and it is discriminatory to silence my voice. This training further supported my opinion that our board president is not suitable for her role and is just absolutely terrible, and she has failed to be a teacher, failed to be a leader in the school district, in my opinion. And that's pretty much what I've learned so far, and we have more training coming up soon.
Please go ahead.
So your training said that the, that the board president was a horrible person, like your training?
That's my opinion from the training that I received. I said she does a horrible job in her role. She's not suitable for her role. And I'll repeat it again.
Audience?
She fails to be a leader in the school district, in my opinion.
Hen?
Mrs. Casper?
Go ahead.
I appreciate that our board president makes an attempt to allow all of us to speak because there are times where other members of the board try to make their opinions heard and they are spoken over or spoken down to. And I appreciate that there is an attempt. If we looked at the number of minutes in our board meetings and how many are allotted to everyone at this table, again, I don't have scientific data, but I can speculate that your view is not the minority of the minutes, or your, your speaking is not the minority of the minutes on our board meetings. And I would like to say to that.
Thank you, Mrs. Shaffer, you don't have the floor yet, Mrs. Bodie. Mr. D, anything?
Yeah, what I'm going to say to this is, until you wear somebody's shoes, you don't know where you have. Until one day you become a president, then you'll be able to know whether Mrs. O'Connor is a good president or not. But I'm not on only one board, I'm currently on four boards, and I know who a good president is. And Ms. O'Connor, you're doing an excellent job.
Thank you, Mr. D.
Thank you for trying to, to put us together because there has been a lot of distractions. I don't know if I were the one sitting there, I would do as good as you're doing, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. D. Mrs. Bodie, any further comments?
Yes, I would like to say unfortunately, the majority of the board just rolls over and doesn't argue their points and just goes to get along. And I would also like to mention that she does, that the board president blocks, that you all block my motions. You do not allow it for, for discussion. And Robert's Rules is used incorrectly majority of the time, so.
Mrs. Casper?
I just would like to say on my behalf that I have an opinion about everything, and I vote accordingly to my opinion, and I don't roll over because someone told me to. So I exempt that comment, but.
Well, Linda said she could control you at the beginning of our run, so.
Excuse me?
I said you are easy, you're easy to control according to the board president. So I don't, I don't know what that means necessarily.
What exactly does that mean?
I don't know, you'd have to ask the board president.
Mrs. Bodie, you, the way that, even if you believe some of the things you're saying, the fact that you take a public board meeting to chastise your fellow board members on any chance that you get, and then wonder why we can't second your ridiculous motions or wonder why you can't seem to get along? It's because you take every public opportunity you can to talk about how horrible we are.
Because you don't second my motions.
I'm going to suggest that we have gone far afield from our board business. I will, Mrs. Bodie, you do not have the floor. I will say a few things and then we'll move along. The board president cannot translate Mrs. Bodie's comments for anyone, so please do not look to me to do that. Furthermore, I would say that using Robert's Rules is for the sake of making sure that the business of the district gets done. Interrupting, chastising, commenting personally and negatively about any board member or administrator sitting on the stage with the board member is not an appropriate use of Robert's Rules. So please, chastising someone for Robert's Rules when you don't follow them yourselves is a bit over the top. We'll go ahead and move along, thank you for your comments, always appreciated. We'll move to the Administrative Report. Mr. Zink, I think you have a permanent appropriations review for us.
We do, we have a permanent appropriation presentation that hopefully doesn't put anyone to sleep tonight. Yeah, yeah, we'll start. Okay. Okay, so we'll start off with what are permanent appropria, or what are appropriations? These are spending levels that are sent by the board or also known as budget. So for fiscal year twenty-four, we've approved temporary appropriations at the June twenty-ninth meeting, which allowed us to begin processing expenditures once we opened fiscal year twenty-four, which is the year we're in right now. The Treasury, for the Treasury to have the authority to issue checks, we have to have appropriations in place. So then the board must pass a permanent appropriation by the first day of October. That's per the O R C fifty-seven oh-five dot three-nine B. Also to note, appropriations can be modified throughout the year if approved by the board. So if there was a need, if we had something happen, the board does have the ability to approve a new amended budget at any time, but it does require board approval. So then the overview of the request, so we approve at the fund and object level. So I thought this year, let's do a little bit more information on what that kind of means. So funds are established to help ensure money is spent for a purpose specified in appropriations and objectives to be served. So for example, we receive the tax dollars for general operating, that's in our O one fund. We also receive debt service, that's what pays its taxpayers or tax, the, we had approval for bond issues to pay for buildings. So that goes into a fund O two. Then we also have tax dollars go to permanent improvements. So each of these have their own fund to ensure that the resources are appropriated and spent for these specific purposes. We can't just take monies and spend them however we want. So that keeps that organized. These funds are also assigned by the Auditorate State's Office. So we follow the U S A S manual, you can find that on Auditorate State's website, that gives those definitions. So from there, we do the, we take it down one level further, we go to the object level. This object detail takes the reporting to the more detailed level for the type of expense. This is how the five-year forecast breaks down expenditures, and we report to that level as required in Lakota Board Policy sixty-two thirty-one. So that was a, a board decision to take that deeper. I will say a lot of districts don't do it that way, they'll just do it to the fund level. But we do it one step further, that a way we can get, you know, kind of more specific on what we're actually budgeting on. Here on this slide, we're shown the recap by fund. So the thing with this is, is this reflects, we are appropriating to cover forty-two different funds this fiscal year. These funds are actually broken down into a hundred and eighty different special call centers to earmark spending for more specific purposes. So even though these are the fund level, then we have the call center level. And when you hear people talk about line item, I would have to get the number. We probably have thirty or forty thousand line items. You know, there's so many line items. So this breaks that down, and as I mentioned in the previous slide, I'm going to zoom in a little bit so I can see it. Fund O one, that's the general fund, we have tax dollars, that's whenever we refer to the general operating in the five-year forecast, that'll be reflected in only the O one fund. Then the permanent, or bond, bond retirement, that's O two, permanent improvement is O three. Our food service programs, we have, that is considered its own fund. So the unique thing about schools is if any given fund wasn't able to support itself, the general fund does have to bail that out. We would see a transfer happen. So we, we do the food service for all of our buildings, provide meals for our kids, breakfast. If that isn't able to sustain itself, then we would be having to see a transfer in order to cover that. Then if you go on down, you'll hear us reference a lot of times the principals' funds. That's an O eighteen fund.
Mr. Zink?
I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Sure.
I know that Mrs. Bodie asked you about several of these in the last several days. Maybe you could walk through each one as you are doing, but hit them all about exactly what they are and what their purpose is.
Okay.
So you left out on O seven?
O seven is special trust, that is where we have actually the, if we have any monies that was sent for scholarships, it would have to go into the O seven. The O nine uniform school supplies, that is for our, where we would collect student fees and where we would pay that. Now, this is a little bit further in the slides. This is kind of handled a little bit differently over the last four years because we've kept those expenditures in that O nine fund, and then we've reclassed them over to the E S R funds. So E S R has supported that, our parents in the district have not had to pay student fees for their consumable supplies. This would make the fourth year for that and the last year for our E S R funds. O twelve, adult education, that is one that we've had for a long time and I believe has been stale. It would have been stale as in has not been used probably since around the two thousand twelve timeline, but we still have that appropriated just in case something came through. Fourteen. Rotary Internal Services, I have to look further into that one. O eighteen is the public school support. O nineteen is where we get the mini grants. That would be like, look, what is the Lakota Fund? If the Lakota, it's now the Northern Cincinnati, if they donate money, we receipt into there. O twenty-two District Agency, that fund used to also include our self, or our fully insured benefits. We are now self-insured, so now it comes to the O twenty-four. The O twenty-two still has our vision and our life insurance in that. O twenty-seven's our workers' comp, self-insured as well. The O thirty-one is the underground storage tank, that is money that we've had for about ten years that we appropriate if we have to have inspections. That was provided us by the state. Two hundred funds, it is, it's, it's if you had gas tanks underground, the oil oil or anything like that, that you would have to have them inspected. The two hundred funds are for the student managed activity or our student activity accounts. Those, those funds we have budget and purpose for, we have advisors for. The expenditures in those accounts are directed by the students that are in the governing body for each one of those, those groups. And we base that on the prior year. Then we have the three hundred, which would be our athletic funds. That includes, in the athletic funds, that includes the pay to participate, that includes, that's where we pay for all of our coaches, that's, we don't, we don't have any of those expenditures within our general fund, some districts you will see that, we actually keep that all separate. And then that transfer that we'll have at the end of the year also goes to support that based around the levy promise that was made. But that's where you'll find the athletics. Four oh-one, that's auxiliaries, that is our, we have, I'm wanting to say St. Rita's, is that right? St. Mary's? St. Mary's is our school, we have the state funds that we receive on their behalf. They can only go for certain things, and then we are the purchasing agent for them. St. Susanna, sorry about that.
I was going to say.
I was getting, yeah, that was, I said both of the names of both my prior two districts' peripheral schools. Sorry about that. Thank you. Then down to five oh-sevens, E S R, that is those elementary, secondary school economic relief funds that was received beginning in twenty-twenty. This will be the last year for those. Basically, the five hundred series all the way down through, that is all of our federal grants. So all of those are earmarked for different functions, the Auditorate State gives us the funds that we have to use for that. So that is much more in depth than I plan to go tonight, but thank you. Any questions before we move on to the?
Yeah, I do. And this zero zero nine, you said, uniform school supplies, that's the spotter? Or what kind of school?
That would be consumable supplies, like things that go away each year. So like, that's where we had been purchasing when we went to the COVID, we went to kits. Each student received a kit based on the grade band they were in that would include crayons, pencils, folders.
That kind of stuff.
Yeah, yeah, glue, yeah. Scissors, I think even, maybe some headphones, maybe.
Are in that, yeah.
But then once we get to the high school levels, we have, based on what class they take, you know, if it's a higher-end art class, it may be ceramics or something like that, that might come with a higher fee because they're using different materials than a different art class would. So that's where we receipt those into, and whenever we have student fees, then those fees would go there. They don't go into our general fund, and then we expend it back out there.
Okay, number twelve, adult education training?
That is one that was older than my time working in the schools. I don't even know exactly what the program was, it would have had to have been a state program that was.
Are we required to, I would, I would consider that an obsolete fund, are we required to keep that?
A defunct, I will look into that. If it's a special revenue fund, we do have the ability to call, consider that defunct and transfer that back, so we'll look into that.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No, I would like to make note that these are what Adam sent to us that I had requested, so you can look further into these, like I typically do, if you just want to reference the email.
Maybe we did do that.
So then in this next slide, this, flip them around. This is, this is a recap by the fund and the object level. So just like in the five-year forecast, if you look at the general fund, based on this permanent appropriation, you have the salaries, the benefits, purchase services, which is the four hundred levels of objects. That's, we're paying somebody to do a service for us. Biggest portion for us there would be the bus, transportation is very large in that section. Then material supplies, capital outlay, that's viewed as things that are permanent or last longer than a year for this purpose. And then we have the debt service, and we have miscellaneous and other items. Other items would be stuff like memberships, awards, things of that nature, so. Auditor and treasurer fees that we receive on our county or on our collection, that would definitely be in the general fund, the biggest there, so. Next slide, this is the appropriation by fund. I thought it was interesting to show that if you look at of our forty-two funds, the top ten funds would make up ninety-seven point six percent. General fund obviously making up the largest portion. So really the, you know, it sometimes seems like we spend the majority of our time on some of the smaller buckets, but that's truly how our breakdown looks here at Lakota. Then this is the object for all funds. So all funds overall, we have sixty point four percent, those salaries and benefits. But this is also including things like our debt payments, our debt payments, the materials overall for the district, our grants, everything's in there, so. So then when you get to the general fund only, that's where seventy-six point three percent is for the salary and fringe in just the general fund. So overall budget, it's a much smaller percentage than it would be in general fund specific. So now, this, this slide is one that's been standing, this is showing the reflection of our COVID relief, our E S R funds. We've received twenty point six five million in that E S R stands for elementary and. We've received twenty point six five million in that Esser stands for elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds. The remaining three point four is projected to be spent before the deadline this time next year. So we're hoping to have all that expended out in fiscal year twenty-four, which if we can, if we can do that, that would save the fiscal year twenty-five audit from also including an Esser review. So that would save us a little time and effort on that end. Now we have some items to consider. So you see, I gave everybody a handout that's about board policy, sixty-two thirty-one. So first thing we have in here is the consumer price index. This is currently reflecting a three point seven percent inflation for calendar year twenty-three to date. You'll see the calculation there. This, this is what restricts our annual budget per policy to exceed the prior calendar year CPI for inflation, which was eight percent in twenty-two. For, and that's only for our general operating fund. So this policy states that the treasurer shall give this calculation to the board. If you look at our permanent appropriations, this currently is reflecting a five point six percent increase, which is much higher than normal. Anyone want to guess why?
Things transferring back in from Esser that had been supplanted?
That's exactly right. So we have these Esser salaries and benefits returning to the general fund as we anticipated for this year, which brings that up. But this policy is kind of a, an interesting policy because that could have been an unintended consequence had we not seen such huge inflation. We wouldn't have actually been able to increase beyond that. So we stayed below. But that policy does put some restriction there, and that's the very last paragraph in policy, sixty-two thirty-one. So something that we want to keep our eyes on as we're moving forward, and we might want to bring that up in future policy. That policy had not been updated since two thousand thirteen, which we know was a very exciting time for the district. Another thing to keep in mind, general fund, we transferred to support the extracurricular activities as part of the levy promise in thirteen, as I mentioned previously. And we've also utilized our Esser funds to support consumable classroom materials for the last four years, as also mentioned. So these are things that are going to be coming back into play moving forward that we'll want to maybe talk through and plan on. So are we fiscally responsible? We ended fiscal twenty-three with a hundred and seven point five million in our general fund and our tenth consecutive balance budget. That is something that I know we're all very proud of. There's a lot of work that went into that. Ten point seven five million, what's that actually mean? That represents, in our general fund, that represents a hundred and sixty-seven days or almost six and a half months of cash on hand. So we do have policies that speak to the cash balances. So we'll keep that in mind as we move forward. Also, our rainy day fund is currently, we've done our transfer for last year. That is now at seven point nine million dollars. So that's something that's been worked on over the last five years and has risen every year. So that's something else we can all be very proud of. And as we all here talked about all the time, we have no operating levies forecasted at this time. That is something else that we always hear, when's the next time we're going to the ballot? Well, we are not forecasting that or planning for that at this moment. So summary, permanent appropriations must be approved before the end of September. That's Ohio revised code. Some districts will do a permanent appropriations in June instead of a temporary, but we've never done it that way. Again, the board can approve modifications throughout the year if necessary. And in November, we will provide more information on the general operating fund as we do our work on the five-year forecast and have that approved before the end of November. Feels like a lot longer presentation than I hoped for it to be.
And a lot of detail, but it's good for everyone to know. Thank you, Mr. Zink.
Any questions?
Questions or comments?
I have a question, Adam. First of all, thank you for this, and thank you for getting it to us so that we could review it over, well, before the meeting, because that's always really helpful. Do we, I know one of the discussions is the school kits and fees. Is that something that, instead of going back to what we had prior to the Esser dollars, it, can we look at maybe, and I know not right now, at some sort of combination? So maybe it's not as cumbersome to our families as it was be prior to COVID?
There's a, there's a lot of conversations that we've been having about how that could look. We've been working with the curriculum team on, you know, pulling that together so that we can have a better grasp of what that could look like so we can present that information at a later time. I will say that I am definitely very aware of soft costs that go into.
Right.
Initiatives.
Right.
And if nothing else, if we do have to bring this back on, if we can do this in a smarter way so that it makes it not only more difficult on our families, but also internally on how we have to process this.
Right.
So there's a lot of things we want to look at there.
Okay, thank you.
Others?
Thank you.
Mr. Zink, I will move us on, but I would like to say I am incredibly proud of the work and time that's gone into the balance budget for ten years. Coming on the board when I did, they were overspending by tens of millions, and that was a normal levy cycle, but I'm so thankful that we moved past that.
I will, I will also say, throw this in there, that that came up at our finance committee meeting, was that, you know, when, when people want to reference balances and what people have, these balances didn't come at the expense of asking for more. It came at hard decisions that was made to reduce the budgets and figure out how we could do business with less.
Well, it gives us resources. As I look at where we are right now, even things like looking at the West Freshman Building, we can tackle that problem because we have the resources available to do it. So thankful for that work and the continued focus on our financial stability for the district. We will move on to superintendent's report. Dr. Lawley?
Thank you. I have some statistics for the thought exchange that has occurred recently. There are five hundred and nineteen people on the curriculum one, and you ask a question about, is this one of the larger responses? Eight hundred and sixty-one people did the superintendent meet and greet that you did back in the spring/summer. Eight hundred and fifty-five people responded to the why would you choose Lakota thought exchange, also, I believe, last spring/summer, and then the five hundred and nineteen for the curriculum work, just to give you an idea of the numbers. So, so those were the people compared to what we talked about with the comments, and then the ratings of those comments. So that we have that data, if you want that for the other ones as well. I wanted to thank the Hopewell Junior High staff, the students' parents, and all the team members around the district for opening up at the alternative site for Hopewell Junior High. I also want to thank the Westchester Nazarene Church for helping the district relocate to their site for the school. The support and the work that's gone into this really shows the true spirit of the community. And I visited the school twice last week, first on the opening day and then later in, in the week, and it was school. So students were glad to be back. They were pleased to have a place to come instead of being remote, and they were all doing what they, they should be doing. So it's a great tribute to the community that everyone joined together to help out the school district and help out the students so they would not have to stay remote or be dispersed around the district. And the internal team, we, we've talked about at the last board meeting, the internal team, the internal people that worked on all this need a great deal of thanks also because they're the ones who managed it all and put it together and then actually implemented it and carried it out. So just a huge thank you for them. And then the second thing I'd like to talk about, and I'd like to further talk about this at the next board meeting. We received the twenty-two, twenty-three state report card last week with the results that are finally finalized and, you know, the permanent numbers that are out there. Lakota received an overall star rating of three point five out of five stars. In analyzing the data, just in the brief amount of time that we've been able to analyze the data, which is not to the depth that we need to get to, the achievement scores are still high in the district, but the value added or progress scores need to be worked on. These scores indicate that individual growth of students aren't, that basically is not where we're doing well at this point in time. So individual growth of students is now a very unsatisfactory number for Lakota. So we need to take a look at that. We need to understand why, and we need to, to fix that because our achievement scores are still very high, but our individual growth scores are not. So we need to talk about that. The, with the two assistant superintendents and myself, we've been meeting with each of the building leadership teams around the district, and we have those meetings scheduled almost on a daily basis up through the first of November in order to meet with each of the building leadership teams to talk about the building data and to determine what supports and help might be added and needed to further personalize the student learning experience and to increase the amount of growth for students. And what I'd like to, to talk about with the Board of Education at the next board meeting on October second, I'd like to not have a business meeting, but instead to have a deep dive so that everyone understands what the test results are telling us and what we're going to do about it. We could start the public listening session at around five o'clock and then do the work session, a deep dive with presentation to the Board of Education and an opportunity for you to question and get answers from all of us who've been working on this and will be working on this at five thirty with no business meeting, no votes or anything needed that day, but just a work session so we can really understand what the report cards are telling us and what plans we have in place to, to make sure that our scores are back up and to make sure that Lakota becomes one of the top one hundred schools in the state again. So I'd like to, to do that on October second.
Is it second, third?
October second is our next meeting. So Dr. Lawley is asking for an earlier start to it. Are we all in agreement?
Yeah, I absolutely want to do that. I think we all are very concerned about that and want to know what the plan in place is to, especially that progress level one. That's the one that's very disturbing. So yeah, I'm fine with starting at five.
Student learning is our core competency. Absolutely. I agree. It's a top priority. Mr. D?
That's a good day. Now, it's a good thing that we're gonna do that, and I'm in support.
Mrs. Schaefer?
That works.
Mrs. Bodie?
Yes, that works. And I think that it's important to, from what I looked at, the, the dive that I did, is the data shows that we are destroying the overall education by focusing on diversity and equity and trying to make sure that everyone is the same. And we actually did that. If you look at the groups, you realize that the groups are closer together. And this is at expense to the higher education of, of our students. And so if you wanted to focus on equity, we definitely did that, and we were successful, and, and that is partly why our grade is so low.
I have a question.
She has no understanding.
Mr. D?
I thought October second is the day that we're gonna go dive in deep to figure out what's, is that the proposal?
The, the, we will review the, the report card data with you and, and come up with our hypotheses for why some of the data looks the way that it does. So for example, we'll go into some of the subgroup work as well and look at that. I will also talk about things that, as we've talked with classroom teachers that are on the building leadership team and are building administrators, things that they have found themselves as they've worked through their own data. And we'll talk about what we're going to put in place or what we are putting in place to make sure that, that the scores go back to where they should be. And I, and I actually need to, to say to you that I don't believe that a one-shot test is a picture of the school district, but it is a, it is a picture that the state looks at. And it's also a picture that helps us determine, are we meeting what the, what the state of Ohio expects as basically a minimum standards from their, from their students and how many of our students are achieving above that? So I think it's important that, that we value the information that we get from it, just to continue our own improvement. But I also think that we don't need to lose sight on the fact that this is an outstanding school system. The school system has produced wonderful, wonderful opportunities for students that are, that are out in the, in the community, out in the, in the workforce, that are in universities doing extremely well. We have students here in this district that are producing today. Even though our test results may look the way that they look, at this point in time, that's not reflective of the school district as a whole. We need to take a look and see what we need to do and, and get those scores up for those progress scores and make sure that all students are reading their, reaching their full potential. But just because the results look the way they look does not mean that this is a bad or failing school system because it is not. Trust me on that. We have work to do. We will do that work, but we are still a very, very fine school district and a school district that will continue to excel.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
I asked that question because I know that there's more that is needed on this so that everybody on this table understand what the purpose is on October second so that we don't draw any conclusion that is not database, is not proven, and we just draw a conclusion and say, the school district is not a good school district. So that is why I asked that question, and thank you for explaining that. We're gonna have the opportunity to dissect, deep, dig deep, figure where we are missing it and get it back. And I believe you have the experience to do that. Thank you.
Mrs. Casper?
Before that October second meeting, will you have had the opportunity to be in all the buildings to see? Because there are some buildings that blew it out of the water. And so what they're doing right, we need to replicate in the buildings that are struggling. So will you have had a chance to look at, into the, the BLTs of all the buildings before the October second?
We will have been in the majority. I believe that there are a couple that we have later after that board meeting, and then there's actually one in November, but we can touch base. I can have both Rob or Stacy, depending on the building, touch base with them, so we have some idea. And, and the important part of the BLT meeting is, is really hearing from the staff.
Right.
And, and they've been very helpful. They've been, they've, they've been very direct about what they believe the scores mean and what the scores are saying to them about what needs to happen in their buildings. And they've been, it's been very, it, it's been really a good opportunity to get to know the flavor of the building and, and some staff members. So as a board, you should be very pleased with the quality of staff that you have in this district because the, the staff that work here work hard and, and they understand what needs to happen. So it's, it's a, it's a very fine group of people. So, thank you.
Thank you. Hearing nothing further, we will move to the treasurer's recommendations, number six, approval of the board minutes. We'll take each one of these separately at the board member's request. Do I have a motion for approval of the board minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer.
I second the motion for approval of board minutes.
Thank you, Mrs. Bodie. Is there discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Bodie?
Yes.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes. We move to B, approval of the monthly financial reports. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll take Mrs. Casper. Is there discussion?
Yes.
Mrs. Bodie?
Since the board is trying to silence the, the minority voice on the board that represents the majority and is not open to, to conversation or including all the voices at the table, unfortunately, I will vote, I am voting no on this, but I do approve the, sorry, I do approve the monthly finance, but I do not approve the cash or some, the cash summary because of what we, we are spending, we are spending money on things I do not approve of.
Is there anything further?
Nope.
I would disagree with the characterization of the minority of time being spoken by the board member. We'll go on and take a vote on B, approval of monthly financial reports. I have a motion and a second.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Ms. Bodie?
No.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes. Move to C, fiscal year twenty twenty-four permanent appropriations. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Casper.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Is there a discussion?
Yes.
Mrs. Bodie?
I will be voting no on this because I do not approve of some of the appropriations that are budgeted.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Ms. Bodie?
No.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes. We move to seven, superintendent recommendations, action items. A, approve personnel items, and B, approve donations. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. D. Is there a discussion?
Yes, I'd ask to have these separated. Yes, I'd ask to have these separated.
I believe what you asked was to separate one particular contract out and there was not a second to your motion and so it died. Is there further discussion?
That's okay if you don't understand what I was asking, but so, yes, the discussion is as far as approving personnel files, I will be voting yes. I will be voting no on the Mr. Vogelmann's.
That's a fraud.
It's all, wait a second.
I'm sorry.
What are you, I'm sorry.
There is not a separate motion on the contract. So, we have a motion to approve personnel items and we have a second part to that motion, which is to approve donations.
Right, but within the approved personnel items, there are two items within that. One is, let me pull it up here, sorry. One is Lakota Vogelmann Assistant Superintendent Contract Addendum and then the final, what do you call that, like the support resignation. So, I support the resignations and the hires. I am not supporting Mr. Vogelmann's, sorry, where did I put my notes on that one? Yes, I have a problem with Mr. Vogelmann's contract. It does not, most, his position does not require the addendum nor the extra vacation days. And another executive member was given this extra, what would you even say that, sorry, these extra things that come with his contract, which is not the normal practice. And I think the board has the responsibility to say no and set the precedent of being fiscally responsible at a time when the economy and the effects of the evaluation are questionable. I also would like to discuss the exit interviews and I think I got some information off of there that I would like to share with you because I feel like that might.
Mrs. Bodie, that is not up for discussion at this moment?
But it is part of the reason that people are leaving, which is why we are approving to support staff resignation. So, yes, it is part of that topic because this is a reason why people are leaving and this is what we're voting on. So, I would like to discuss that. So, part of that, part of the reason that people are, you know, had left, there was one that said, so with professional development, we got a three in that. And so, I'm wondering if maybe we can, we can get different PD days that might help our students improve our grade card overall and what some of the feedback was maybe the skills on, skills on teaching the kit, the students' skills on how to test and study. So, that might help with some of our test scores. And then, there's also some feedback that teachers are frustrated because they're not able to discipline students appropriately and that would be under the restorative practices. So, that is a concern. I think if a child is misbehaving, we should be able to discipline evenly across the board and not be afraid of retribution. So, that is part of the feedback from the exit interview. And so, I think maybe we should reevaluate some of our professional development when majority of the items got a four or a five rating, but that got a three rating. So, that might be an area of opportunity.
Thank you for your opinions. Dr. Lally, would you like to respond back to any of that?
We're happy to review it. The number of people, I sent that to the entire board, the number of people that actually respond don't typically reflect all of the people that have left the district. But we're happy to take a look at the PD day review, you know, review that, see what skills might need to be taught. We'll be doing that anyway with the test results. And the idea of study skills is something that we do have in some of our buildings and that may be one of the things that we talked about earlier, some people knocked it out of the park. Maybe they knocked it out of the park because they have that. So, it's not a problem to review that and to assess that. But again, it's a very small, it's a very small number of people that respond to those exit surveys in total.
So, that makes me think that.
I think assessment, excuse me.
Sorry.
Assessment of best practices is absolutely what we need to be doing, what's working and what's not. So, if you would get back to us on that and what your takeaways are from these exit interviews and what you consider to be significant in that data, I think we would all appreciate hearing that. Is there anything further, Mrs. Bodie?
Yes, what that makes me also realize is even though it is a small, minute of people that are answering, that are answering these exit interviews, it makes me think that maybe there's a bigger underlying problem when there's a few that are answering the same way. But I would say majority of them gave the district a four or a five, which is, which is pretty good. But my, you know, we can, we can say great job all day long, but until we find the opportunities and find our failures and approach those, then we'll continue failing. So, that's what I'm trying to do is find our opportunities and hopefully this will, you know, bring some, some attention to areas that we can improve on. So, thank you so much for listening to me.
And, Mrs. Bodie, I don't disagree with you on looking at what could be potential areas of need. That's something that we do need to look at no matter where we are. I have found in my experience with exit interviews that we always get a very small number and it really doesn't, it really doesn't matter. The school district that I've been in, it's almost as if people are saying, "Well, I'm finished, so I'm not going to do the, do the exit interview." And I know that some schools, when they have the capacity, they'll actually ask somebody to come in and do it face to face. And sometimes they will and sometimes they won't, but we can only, we can continue to try and get people to do those exit interviews and actually give us information that can help us grow and develop as a district. So, thank you.
Yeah, I'm thankful, I'm thankful for these exit interviews, although it's just a small little report, I'm still able to see, have some insight into the.
Mr. D.
Yes, I still want to bring back the point. You did a deep explanation of what October 2nd is going to be. I believe that there's processes, there's way we're going to get to some of those reasons and how we're going to get things, but I'm completely confused where we are right now on the agenda and where we just moved to. The goal is, we're going to do a deeper dive into all these courses and come up with solutions. Am I right?
Yes.
Then I'm confused where we are in the agenda because we completely moved to something else. I don't know where we are.
So, we are still on the Superintendent Recommendations, Approved Personnel Items, which includes all portions of the personnel items so that that's clear for everyone, and B, Approved Donations. So, without further discussion.
Please.
Please call the roll, Mr. Zink.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. D.
Yes.
Ms. Bodie.
No.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes. We'll move to number eight, Closing Comments. Mrs. Bodie.
First of all, I'd like to know, or like to point out that Dr. Lally sent out a recap, so thank you for that. Some things I would like to note. The MTSS Director is being moved to the Director of Accountability. So, what I would like, if possible, I would like an explanation through email or something why you made that decision. Also, we still have the Diversity and Inclusion Department. It is now called the Executive Director of Pupil Personnel. I also would like to state, sorry, what was my last, I think my last one was, so there was, you know, we were in the news again this past week and I would like to mention that I believe that this is a ruse by Isaac to shield himself from criticism. His politics are wicked and in my opinion, and in the opinion of many others in the community, I will continue to be critical of Mr. D and he will not be let off the hook for making terrible decisions that could potentially be harmful to our students of Lakota. It's also shameful that the national abuse of the legal system to target political opponents has breached Butler County. I will continue to do my job in fighting for parents, teachers and children's rights in Lakota schools.
Mrs. Schaefer.
I would like to also congratulate the staff at Hopewell for the, and the rest of the staff throughout the district who have done such a big lift. I don't think anyone can fully appreciate just how extensive that was in all aspects, from food service to, I mean, just fiscal plan, everything that had to be done and the church, that they were willing to change their security measures to make sure we had a secure building, that our SROs went over there and made sure everything was safe. So, thank you to that entire, everyone who touched that whole process and our students. I heard anecdotally, I'm not sure if it's true, that they had the highest attendance the first day over there than, that we've had all year. So, everyone was like, I think, anxious to see what it was going to be all about. Congratulations to both of our bands who competed this weekend. West hosted their first Invitational and I heard it was very successful. I was watching my own son do cross country, so I apologize I was not able to make it. Exit interviews, I think we have to be cautious of reacting to something that is not statistically significant, given the number of people we have. I would look forward to a broader survey to have a better understanding from all of our staff so that we can make decisions that work for a statistically significant number of our staff members. I was thankful to be able to support Mr. Vogelmann in his contract addendum today to make sure that there was consistency there and also to recognize his efforts to step up for the district at a time where we needed someone to step up and where he was trying to do three different jobs simultaneously and how much money that saved the district during that time when he was wearing three hats and thank him for all of the lifting he did during that time. I also think, and again, I know we will talk more about the report card, but we have to be careful with recognizing when we have our financial presentation tonight and speak about how proud we are of our balanced budget and while that's clearly been a priority in making sure that we are very fiscally responsible, I think we also have to recognize the impact that can have when we don't perhaps invest as much as we need to in curriculum or perhaps, perhaps class sizes. At this point, out of, we said we wanted to be top 100 in the achievement categories and how we're doing as a district, but right now, out of 607 districts, we are 467th when it comes to spending. So, I think that that, we have to recognize that there are impacts of keeping over $100 million in-house versus investing in our students in the future and the report card and their success. So, I just think that we have to be careful, as with anything, that we don't go too far in one direction and making sure we manage the success of our students and that report card and our own ownership of what we're doing to perhaps not get the results that we'd like to see. So, and I think we also need to remember some of the great things we have added that perhaps, again, are not focused on report card results, but like the Cyber Academy, Shark Tank and different things that actually do lead to student success and great futures for our kids, even though they're not tested subject areas. So, that's all.
Mrs. Casper.
Again, ditto everyone's Hopewell Junior staff, students. It's amazing to me. I just, the fact that the church bent over backwards and said, "Come, do whatever you need," and they changed so many of their own practices, they canceled some things they had scheduled, which I think is really a great gesture, all to help the students at Hopewell so they wouldn't have to be remote. So, I also, I think that's a great, great thing and I, and I know that once we're back in Hopewell, that we will have them, thank them publicly at a board meeting for all that they did for our students. I want to second Mrs. Schaefer's approval of Mr. Vogelmann and I too was proud to approve him. To make things, to make sure somebody is fairly treated and fairly compensated for the job that they do doesn't mean we're just not afraid to say no. I think that we look at the value that we have in our staff and our people and when somebody steps up in a situation like that, for us not to recognize that, I think, would be unfair. I also want to thank Dr. Lally for her comments about the report card. The report card is not where any of us want to be, but again, this still is a good, great district that's turning out great students and we have some work to do and we know that and we need to. But again, you can't put all of your hopes and dreams in one state test score and the things that we do for students each and every day that we are not measured on. I'm not saying that I am at all happy with the report card because I was, it ruined my entire weekend, FYI, but I am saying that there's still great things going on in this district and I don't want to lose sight of that. So.
Dr. Lally.
I'd like to comment on the MTSS. It's not a, it's just a change of title because as we look at what the MTSS Director does, it's more accountability focused with looking at what our data are telling us and how we can then use that data. So, that's why we want to change that title to have it further reflect the broader scope of things that's happening within that department as opposed to, MTSS is the tiered system of support and it just gives it, it just gives it a broader focus, which is what they're actually doing. So, that's why we changed the, or we're opting to change the title of that position as opposed to keeping it as just MTSS because that's a very narrow focus. There's no change in pay, there's no change in the personnel, it's just a change in the title to encompass everything that they're actually doing with students.
Do you want to address the, there's still a DEI department and Director of Pupil Personnel?
We still have Diversity and Inclusion as part of the pupil personnel services that we offer. At this point in time, there's really no one in that area right now. So, Stacy Maney has been working with the champions and meeting with them and working through what their presentations are inside the buildings and they're basically focusing in on inclusion and making sure that all students feel welcome and feel as if they belong to the school, to the, to the classroom, et cetera. So, that's what's happening with that at this point in time.
Thank you. Did you have anything else, Dr. Lally? Did you have anything else? Okay. Mr. Zink.
Well, I just got back from a vacation. Today was my first day back. It was nice to get away, so shout out to the team in the Treasurer's Office for keeping everything going in the right way. Mr. Oskley for all of his work on the permanent appropriations, he really helped, helped me. We reviewed that. I was in Florida and he was up here, but he really did a lot of work to help put that together for us. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. D.
Yes, just want to like piggyback to what my, what members, fellow members, members that made comment on Mr. Vogelmann. I support that as well and when anything goes off, we need to fix it, we need to fix it. I'm in support of that as well. Hopewell Junior, want to thank the teachers and the students for that adjustment and the church. And I also want to thank Dr. Lally and your team, Adam and your team, for all the distractions and you're able to get that settled. We really, really appreciate you for that and I want to give you our appreciation. On report card, I believe, like everybody else has said, and Dr. Lally also said, "This is not a bad school district." I believe that everybody knows that we had a lot of distractions. A lot of our board meetings have been distracted into unnecessary things that I believe strongly when we did dive into some of the things that affected us, we're going to know that it's time when the board is sitting, we need to focus on students' achievement and things that's going to move us forward instead of unnecessary distractions. I believe that's one of it as well. I know this night, this conversation about me, I don't know what I've done, that's so bad. I'm always the only person that is distracting or preventing anybody from doing what they want to do. I believe that we all want this school district to succeed and if we have to do that, we have to first of all be professional and also make sure that we respect other people and do not try to impose whatever it is that you think, or try to get praise. I'm the one doing this, I'm the one doing that. No, it's a team. We're a team of five. We're going to disagree to agree. And when we disagree and at the end of the day, we vote and whatever prevails, take it and run with it. That is how we're going to succeed. But if we're going to continue to create division and continue distraction, I don't know how we're going to, our students are going to improve. So, as far as I'm concerned, I'm going to continue to support. So as far as I'm concerned, I'm going to continue to support the board and whatever I can do to help get our, our report card back on track, and I look forward to October 2nd.
Thank you.
Thank you. Several comments. Um, I'll just say on the one piece, I look forward to the timeframe when we are in the news because of the great things that our students and staff are doing. I look forward to that, and if all of us could begin to focus toward that, that would certainly make a big difference for our district. So as everyone has said about the report card, very disappointing, certainly not what we wanted to see. I believe we have the right leadership team in place to make a difference in that. Dr. Lolly was brought in in part because of her very strong curriculum expertise, and I think she's already on track for how we need to work on improving things. Mrs. Schaefer, we often agree on, on things, but we also disagree on occasion, so I would say that when we were not passing levies and when we had lost the community's trust, it was a very important point to come back to fiscal stability for the district. And I would say when I look at, and this is more a conversation for our next meeting, but when I look at where have we invested, I do believe we spend a lot of time and energy and just to focus on investing in areas of innovation, and I think perhaps we lost track of some of the foundational pieces as we were doing that. I would also say that we invest in a curriculum department that does a great job doing model curriculum, but do we then require that that's being used in our classrooms consistently? And that's a question I hope that you'll weigh in on when we have a conversation. So is it a matter of, are we making investments, or is it a matter of, are we investing in the right places? For me, would be where I might see that differently than you, but I appreciate your point of view. I did have an opportunity, as, as several people did, I think, to go over, and they're calling it Operation Hopewell. In addition to the other comments, I think the thing I appreciated most was as the kids were changing classes, moving very smoothly from room to room, totally different schedules, big groups getting together, small groups getting together, and a very, very different process for them. It almost reminded me a little bit of being at summer camp and how you move through different things. Kids were smiling, they looked totally comfortable, they looked very resilient, and I know our staff did a terrific job with that, including our central office staff. Which brings me to Mr. Vogelmann, and I'm sorry you've been called up by name so much tonight, Mr. Vogelmann. I don't necessarily think that's an appropriate thing. Um, I had asked Dr. Lolly about, so who was responsible for really pulling together the Hope, the Operation Hopewell piece, and she said Rob Vogelmann was. He pulled the people together, he pulled the schedules together, he worked in, on the logistics part, the logistics part of it. Again, I think that's an example of somebody who brings a great skillset to the table. I think he's been here for 26 years, and, um, as I think Mrs. Casper mentioned earlier, when we needed him to step up, he did step up, and he was fulfilling several different roles, so. I'd also like to say, um, for those that have not looked at the contract, a, a big portion of that contract was adding an annuity that was going to be based on performance with very, very specific goals that will be developed with the superintendent, and I think that's an appropriate incentive, and I'm sure that you will hold him to very high standards, so I have no doubt of that. So again, I'm comfortable with approving that contract. I was at a Junior Achievement Board meeting this morning, and we were taking a look at all of the districts and their participation in junior achievements, which brings, uh, career, career exploration for elementary schools and financial literacy programs, and I think we have an opportunity here for our students to be more involved in this. Right now, we have just two of our elementaries doing it, and that's Cherokee and Adena, so there might be some opportunity using an outside partner to be able to do more of that kind of work with our kids. So I hope that we can explore that. I think it'd be a great opportunity for us. Mrs. Schaefer, thank you for bringing up the bands. I'm, I'm still a band mom, and I just can't move away from it, and they've always done an amazing job in it, doing their first Invitational, they did a great job with it, so. On that note, uh, we will wrap it up. Board, it sounds like we have agreed to the October 2nd start of 5:00 p.m. for community listening, 5:30 p.m., and it will be a work session focused on a report card and next steps we're going to take to do to improve that student achievement scoring. If there's nothing further, is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. D.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Please call the roll.
Mr. D.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Ms. Bodie.
Yes.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes. Thanks, everyone.[1794.88]